This regular meeting of the Board of Safety to order. This is a meeting that has been adjourned from September 7th, 2022. Regular meeting schedule. For the record, it is now 5:32 PM. It is Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. We are in the City Hall Auditorium and participating in the meeting this evening is Commissioner Spino, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, and Commissioner Cogswell. Before we begin the meeting, could we stand and pledge the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. And this is all for the sake of justice.
Okay, I'll jump into item one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So.
Commissioner Benedetto and second by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open and there are no members of the public present unless David had anything. Do you have anything? Okay, good. Before moving into the second agenda item, I'll just make a note that Commissioner Battle is also in attendance here at City Hall this evening. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from August 3rd, 2022.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to authorize utilization of state contract number 12PSX0194 to purchase two utility half-caged police interceptors for $48,780.65 per unit plus $7,230 per unit radio outfit for a total cost of $56,010.65 per vehicle or a total cost of $112,021.30. Acquisition will be from MHQ Municipal Vehicles of Marlboro, Mass. To be paid from the vehicle replacement account, further explained in purchasing agent letters dated September 1, 2022. This, of course, is pending City Council approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner McElroy. Are there questions?
I just have a quick question. Chief, when you all to look for vehicles, have you looked at anything electric?
We are, the Vehicle Replacement Committee is really the defining factors to how we go about getting vehicles. And generally rely on Emile Don, the Street Department, who oversees our fleet. We have talked about this in our last Vehicle Replacement Committee. We did talk about electric vehicles. We talked about hybrid vehicles. We do know that obviously we're heading in that direction. Right now, the infrastructure isn't in place for all electric vehicles. But I would anticipate that going down the road, you're going to see, you may see that, you may see vehicles. Right now, the state police, for example, they are running hybrids. They've had some issues with some of them, but they've also, they're starting to come a long way compared to what they were when they were initially put out into the field. So it is something that we've talked about, something that we're considering, something that we know that we're going to have to take seriously down the road. Do have to say that they are extremely, a heck of a lot more expensive too than what we're dealing with right now. So, but that is something down the road.
What does the state use, are they using Explorers?
Yeah, the Explorers. They're using some hybrids right now. They have some hybrids in their fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the motion?
And just to, just to add to that, for other city departments, Emile has purchased a, the city, the council approved a purchase of a hybrid vehicle. That's going to be tested in the city. So that is, so we are heading in that direction.
Okay, so how much was it?
I don't know, ma'am. Maybe the mayor, is that the Maverick that went up?
I was just looking up the Maverick name of it, yes. So that was the goal, is to look at the Maverick. Trying to think, it was a, in the streets, the Public Works Streets Parks Department. We were looking at two vehicles and they were going to make one of those acquisitions this time. Okay, did they give a price? I'll have an answer for you by the end of the meeting. I have to go back to the council meetings and minutes and luck, okay? Okay. Thank you. All right, while that's happening, any other questions? Because that, the price of that hybrid vehicle, isn't that pertinent to this motion? If there are no questions relative to this motion, I'd like to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll get that answer for you on the other vehicle. Thank you. All right, item number four. Okay, all right. So the council approved the purchase of a 2022 Ford Maverick XL, four-wheel drive. The purchase price approved was $24,600.
That's on the much lower end of, yes. That's a very small pickup truck.
That is correct.
Explorers are going way more than that.
Yes.
We can buy three.
Okay, please uniforms. Motion, what we're looking for here. Yep, I'll entertain a motion. Based on the recommendation of Lieutenant Thomas Rulo, Training Officers Nicole Santiago and Chief William Baldwin, and purchasing agent Penny Zucco to award a contract to the Fairfield Uniform Company out of Bridgeport, Connecticut, at the annualized estimated cost. Funding for the purchase is budgeted in the Police Budget Uniform Allowance Line item. This is a $42,000 expenditure pending City Council approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions?
Is Fairfield, is that a different company we're using?
Yes, I believe the fire department is already on board with Fairfield Uniform, is that right?
Better price or better quality?
It, the quality is just as good. I know there was some dynamic that I'm not really that familiar with as it related to the bidding and purchasing process. So, but we know Penny was on top of it, so.
And this is one of those bids where, you know, each item, you might find that the shirts with one company are cheaper than the shirts from another company, but the slacks are more expensive. So this is one of those bids, it's tricky to, you know, pull it together.
If I may, ma'am. Also Fairfield Uniform has done a very good job with their service, son. So they offer a lot of opportunities for different types of uniforms or shirts and things like that. And they truly meet what we need and they do their best to deliver within a timely fashion. But with everything else, it takes a long time to get uniformed because supply and demand is very difficult right now. But they, I think, are probably one of the better companies out there right now.
And if I could just bounce on that, New England Uniform, we've been having problems with their service. It's been very, it hasn't been well, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard this name before. Since we heard that.
All right, any other questions on the purchase of the uniforms? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's report for July 2022.
So moved.
Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McElroy. All right, questions for the chief on the report? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Warren's report for July 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions on the report?
One question, chief, does not necessarily specific to the report, but maybe just a good time to ask it. I think it was in Handen or Milford, I might be confusing it. And I guess electric vehicles is the popular topic tonight. But that a commuter bus was a fully electric fire and was an interesting situation put out because it's not like an internal combustion engine. And I think it kind of, there was an article that I was reading that exposed that, you know, there's not a lot of protocol or training that has been going on or is starting to be developed. I know there's not a lot on the road now, but we're going to see more and more. What are we going to do with the fire department? Is there more protocols coming down in terms of training? And because obviously the batteries are in there are much different. And as this was pointing out there in case, so, you know, just pouring water on it's not exactly effectively to fight it. So I was just curious how we're.
Pouring water on it is sometimes detrimental. Yeah, there's more training coming down the plate for it. It's going to become more prevalent that we're going to see more fires with these type of vehicles. Just by the nature of the beast kind of thing. Not that they're inherently more dangerous or anything like that. Just as they get older, things wear out and the battery life on them is shortened as, you know, when the ages. So, yeah, there is quite a bit of training that is out there right now. There has been for a long time since the preuses first started coming out, learning how to deal with not so much fires, but dealing with how to incapacitate the battery itself and make it safer for first responders to work around it. So now we're looking at a different direction as a fire service. So now we're dealing with fire problem and the lithium ion batteries that they're using in those vehicles present a big problem because the carcinogens they put off are a lot more hazardous than a typical car fire would put off. And applying water to it, unless you have copious amounts, very much like a magnesium fire that we had on certain German manufacturers and things like that. We're looking at a different strategy, how we fight fires in those vehicles.
Have you, in your experience, obviously you're newer here, have you seen one in yourself in your private department?
I have not. I've read, you know, a lot of articles about the departments going through, but I have not seen one personally.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask because it was something that was interesting from the story and it's certainly much different than what we're used to.
Yeah.
And we're only going to see more of them, not necessarily fires with more electric vehicles.
Did they say how the life of the battery, how long?
Well, I mean, this was a commuter bus that was pretty new. So it wasn't even, you know, unless there was, I don't think they ever determined a cause, but it's just, you know, so it wasn't even like it was something that had been out there for a long time. I mean, in fact, the state has suspended their commuter bus, electric buses until they kind of, kind of flesh it out a little more and figure out what's going on.
I really don't want to throw a manufacturer's name out there, but they're probably the predominant one out there, Teslas and stuff like that. As they're starting to get into that eight to 10-year range, they're starting to have issues with them. But that doesn't mean newer vehicles can't have the same issue. So it's something that we're very aware of and keeping abreast of what we can do to deliver service to, if there is a fire or something like that. We're all learning as we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One of the problems in the fire service, obviously, is we can't just go out and purchase or get donated 50 different style cars to extricate and light on fire to practice and train. So we usually go by what other departments have done or tried and then do training. And the training is typically more on PowerPoint or books because we can't go purchase all the types of vehicles that we want to practice on. So that's another issue too, is time. And you have to wait till these things occur and see what other people have done and what's available and, you know, what the manufacturers recommend. Those are some of the issues that we deal with too on the fire service.
Other questions on Chief Warren's report? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS Provider Activity Report for July 2022.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Spino. Questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments. They're not here. I'll entertain a motion to table this.
Motion to table number eight.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Cogswell, second by Councilman Benedetto, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item nine. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. So thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. And second by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting with Chief Baldwin.
Good evening. Just the, we have a SRO now that has started up the middle school of very, very much needed. Officer Foley had gone through a process and he was accepted. He's fitting in very well. I just received an email from the superintendent who spoke very highly of his interaction with the kids. So we're very, very happy with, with that. We, today we did a tobacco compliance, tobacco combine, let me try this, a tobacco compliance check. We, we worked with Department of Mental Health today. We did 31 checks. Of those 31 checks, we found two violations where tobacco was illegally sold. That was the two locations are Sitco up on the north, up on North Elm Street and City Smoke on Winston Road were the two violations. One of those, I'm not quite sure which one it, that was, there was a second violation for one of those.
They were both second violations.
They were, okay, so both of them were second violations. So we will continue to do that. We're going to be continuing to work with them as that was on a grant through the McColl Foundation. And they're very excited to continue on this grant program and these, these checks. Our paddle golf tournament is Monday, the 26th of September. Also, myself, the mayor, Personnel Director Catherine Gonzalez and our Training Officer had a meeting with Army PAYS program. And very briefly, what it is, is a program where we're going to be, we were potentially going to be working with the US Army to get potential candidates for the Police Department. So those that are coming out of doing their service in the Army after two, two to six years, when they're looking for employment opportunities, Torrance Police Department is going to be part of that. And it's not just going to be for the Police Department, it's going to be also for fire service as well as other city departments within, within our, our community. So it looks like it's going to be a great program. We're excited about it. Obviously, if it doesn't work out, you know, we have the option to bow out of that, but it's at no cost to the city. And we have significant, we'll have the resources that the Army has for us to, to move forward with the program.
Is that the heroes to hero?
No, it's a little bit different, ma'am. If you want to talk a little more about the program.
It's, it's, what they do is, it is essentially a recruitment or headhunter kind of service. Job seekers kind of service. So as Army soldiers are retiring or transitioning out of service and transitioning into regular jobs, what they try to do is they try to establish partnerships with municipalities, states, universities. We heard today that there are a couple of universities to establish this partnership so that they could start pushing these potential candidates into job openings within the organization.
So I have two recruits at the fire academy right now from the Army that the Army's paying the 14 weeks for them to go through. It's called Hero to Hero. And once they graduate and certified, any department can basically pick them up if they want because they're already trained and it didn't come from the city to pay for it.
There's no, the Army is not going to be paying for academy seats or anything along that line. Basically what this is, and that sounds like a great program that you're speaking of.
There's two of them in the academy.
Yeah, this is basically like, as the mayor stated, like a headhunting thing. And basically what it does is that people who are transitioning out of the Army, doing their service in the Army, if they're looking for full-time work, they're going to kind of direct them towards the city of Torrington. And, you know, it's obviously the focus is for our department simply because we're so shorthanded and we're looking for good recruits. But the focus is going, but, but it's going to be, you know, in, for the entirety of the city. So it'll include Street Department, include firefighters. It'll include people as they transition out of the Army to go into this, into these full-time positions that we have vacant.
Yeah, they try to match up their skill sets, you know? So if the skill set is, you know, mechanics, you know, they're certainly going to try to steer them to their area of expertise, you know, marketing and.
We always struggle to get diversity, you know, by hiring locally and just, we only have the resources we have. The US Army though, I mean, if we, if we advertise with them and people look and see us and decide to come and apply, that's really all it is, is a resource for them to come and apply with us. I mean, you can't get more diverse than the US Army, so it's great for, it should be a great resource for us.
Yeah, so the program is the P A Y S program. And at this stage, we are just, they're doing their due diligence because obviously the success of the program is they vet the city, you know, their partner to determine whether or not we're a good fit for the program. And then if, after all their research, they determine that this is a good fit, then they present us with a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. And it would be at that point that we would probably call a joint meeting with the Board of Safety and the City Council so that we can go over the terms of the MOU and bring in the representative from PAYS to talk about the program and talk about the benefits that it'll bring to the city. Now, this is a great opportunity to access a skill set that's already trained. You know, that's, you know, gone through all the physical training as well as military training, but also connecting veterans to jobs, you know? So all around, I do, I think this is a great program and I have to give credit to the chief. I know that you had been looking into the program a while ago and it came back around more recently. I think it's time for us to do this.
And this also includes reserves too. It's not, it's not only full-time retired personnel, it's actually after.
Reserves.
Stuff like that, that want to find jobs. It's a, it's a huge resource.
Is it all branches or just?
Just the army.
Yeah.
And then finally for my report, we have, we had the 9/11 ceremony. Chief Gordon may speak a little more on that, but that was on Sunday morning. Commissioner McElroy was, was present. It was, it was again, to remember our fallen heroes that, that passed away that day. From the emergency management perspective, the only thing I have is our COVID positivity rate is 9.31% today. Again, as I mentioned every meeting, we just need to continue to remember that COVID is alive and well out there. So we just need to continue to not let our guard down, continue to wash our hands, social distance, you know, do the best we can to keep ourselves healthy, vaccinations, things along that line. So that's all I have.
Questions for the chief? All right. Chief Gordon.
My turn. You notice how we passed the buck on the 9/11 ceremony? When I passed it to him first, but. So I'll get back to that in a few minutes. Fire department wise, we're in the process of reviewing new hydraulic rescue tool to replace what we currently have. And we're hoping to get a grant for that, that's already been applied for, but we're still waiting to hear on it. In the meantime, we're trying to review what's out there to say what's going to be our best option. So more to come with that in the future. We lost another employee, Brandon White, resigned with the department to go to Southbury Training School as a firefighter. So we're going to have a vacancy that we're going to have to carry into the spring along with the two that were budgeted for, for the spring. So we'll be looking at that. Our cascade system has been repaired by our own members to stop it from leaking, but it still has some issues. It's something that I want to explore a grant to replace it with a modern unit and a blast chamber and all the things that go with it. So again, we'll be looking at that, but it'll be based off of grant money if we can get the funding for it because it's an expensive piece of machinery. Our extractor that we use for cleaning out our gear after fires and things like that, we're continuing to have problems with that with the programming. We've had the company out there several times and one time that when the technician was out there, he got injured. Fell off a bucket when he was trying to reach for something and it's been kind of a cluster since then. But we're trying to get that fixed. So right now we're relying on Winston and Hurington to help us with our gear if we need to have it cleaned. So that's that. The boat is another continuing saga. We have not kind of pulled back from the company. They did repair our smaller one, the Avon boat, so that is operational, but we're still relying on Winston again for mutual aid to back us up in the event we have a water rescue. So we'll hopefully get through that soon. The volunteer departments, I learned most recently that I believe Drakeville was able to do something with the ARPA fund and get new tires for their apparatus, one of their pumpers, which is a great thing. And Torrington Ford is still waiting for approval on a AFG grant for the replacement of their SEBAs. So we'll see where that goes. We are in the process of looking at a promotional exam in the future pending the anticipated retirements of two of our lieutenants that will be leaving in the spring slash early summer. So working with the union to establish a reading list, which we're probably going to keep on the same track as what we've done before. But we want to add consistency to the process so the members can start studying, that are eligible can start studying now and have plenty of time to be able to read through the books and also limiting it down to probably three actual fire service related type material. Then maybe one that I'll throw in as a leadership kind of thing. And then looking at our policies and trying to dial those down because we have so many of them. It's impossible to study them all and remember them all for beat them for testing. So we won't try to just kind of narrow the process down a little bit. So we're working on that right now with the union. And starting on working on ship meetings, it's been kind of a difficult thing. I want to get together with the memberships and start talking to them and letting them know where we're going with these things. I've been corresponding with them through email and different means electronically to keep them up to date with what we're doing. But I still have to sit down and do a face-to-face with them, which is a very high priority for mine, for me. As you know, we hired a new individual last month and he's currently in the fire academy right now, doing very well from what I hear. And we're going to take a visit up there next week and check in on him and see how he's doing. So, but he seems to be accomplishing very well to the academy life, which is good, because it's a difficult thing. Well, let's see. Met with Chief Baldwin and several of the different communities around us with regards to LCD and Next Gen and the RMS system. So we're moving forward with that to see what's going to be the best option, if we're all in or if we're separating and that kind of thing, what makes the most sense, you know, financially and on LCD's part of understanding. If they have to use two or three different systems, it's very difficult for them to do that for dispatching. So if we can streamline that, that would be great. And then the last thing is the 9/11 ceremony. I thought that went very well. From what I hear, it wasn't as well attended as it has been in the past. But unfortunately, you know, we're looking at 21 years later and people kind of, even though they say they don't forget, they still do. But I think ceremony itself was a success and I think we paid to contribute to all those that lost their lives as a result of that event, both on the day and currently to this day.
Thank you, chief.
I just have one question for you, chief. Did you do an X exam on the firefighter that was leaving?
I met with him and the reason why he is leaving is benefits and pension and for his family. Longevity for his family. The pay is a little bit less to where he's going, but because of the benefits package and having a true pension to go because it's a state job, that's what he cited as the reason that he.
So it's more benefits than money, you think?
Longevity. It's, you're looking at your future, you know? And you have a family to plan for 25 years from now. Those are things that go into your thought process. I don't fault him for it, it's just, it is what it is.
Yeah.
But, you know, he was very upfront and honest. And originally, I've heard through the rumor mill that he was working both jobs at one point and that's a known home.
Yeah.
So, but he came up, he was very upfront with it and then within less than a week, he says, I made my decision, I'm going to go there. Okay?
You got to realize too, that years ago, a benefit of being a police officer and a firefighter, because the pay was pretty pretty, especially when I started for what I did for a living. The pension was something to look forward to down the road for all you years of service, risking your lives and all that other stuff. With that gone now, in this day and age, people are just going to keep moving left and right. A reward at the end, you know? How much longer is the lieutenant's list in existence? It's eighteen months, I believe, isn't it?
A few more months, it's not very long.
It's not that long.
Yeah, it's not that long. So I want to start preparing.
Yeah, yeah.
For the level that we have to.
When it ended.
Right. And then, you know, Chief Trip, I think, probably has about a year left at most. And he'll be moving on, so we're looking at some attrition in the upper ranks as well. So I want to get ahead of it. And like I said, one of the big things is give them plenty of time to study. Don't just bring it on two or three months before we test. They should, they should be testing or studying, excuse me, to prepare for it. So when we establish the right reading list and get that out there, then they can go do their thing and then it's up to them. I think we'll get a better product out of it in the end.
Other questions for Chief Gordon? Thank you, chief. Anything else from Trinity this evening?
No, I just wanted to welcome Dave Kreshuk. He's the president of Trinity Health, New England EMS. He just wanted an opportunity to come here today and just introduce himself and meet everyone. And that's it.
Thank you. Anything from the board? All right, we'll move right into item 10. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members of the Board of Public Safety.
So moved.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Caxwell. All in favor? Any opposed? We'll start on my left and start with Commissioner Battle.
Yeah. So we want to just say, good to see everyone again. We thank you all for coming out to our national night out. Really enjoyed, glad to have you. You know, my community neighborhood at all are always excited when you know, you come and you're there. So we appreciate that. We thank you for the service, for the updates, for all the information that you gave us. For me, I get a little iffy about the hybrid cars. So that's why I'm always asking some questions because I, I don't know, they sort of, I don't know, it makes me nervous a little bit. You know, from infrastructure costs, everything else, you know, worried about the batteries and that kind of thing. So I understand we're moving forward, going into different, you know, electronics or technical uses, but always a little bit worried about what that means. So, so thank you for information and update and.
Okay. Commissioner Caxwell.
I just wanted to recognize, thank you, the Fire Department, Police Department for your nine 11 ceremony. Unfortunately, I was out of town for a family commitment, but certainly something I would want to be at. And sorry to hear the attendance was down a little because it is important that we do this each year and.
Jeff was there, EMS was.
EMS, I'm, I'm sorry. Well, and everyone that's involved in this, it's not just, but um. You know, and the years I've been there in the past, so it is a special ceremony. It's important we do this each year to, to remember. And even though it's 21 years ago, I for one certainly remember that as about as vivid as if it was yesterday. But I just wanted to recognize how important it is and thank you for everyone that coordinated that and be a part of it. And it's much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Yes, just welcome the president. Thank you for taking the time coming off to our meeting. Your training does a very good job in the city. Thank you. On the fire department side, I was thinking about the boat. Is there a way, a loaner boat out there? You reach out, departments have two boats? Or rent a boat? People are pulling boats out of water now, so.
Well, getting a loaner boat is difficult because obviously when they purchase equipment, it's justified for their needs. So they're not so willing to release it. That's why we rely on mutual aid partners to supplement those for now. As far as a rental thing, you know, it's another expense that, to me, renting something is just throwing money out the window.
Well, no, it's when we can get time to buy a new boat. I mean, in the meantime, so we're not relying on Winston, you know, in case of emergency.
We're not looking at, you know, a plethora of water rescues that we have to do. So I wish that is more than willing to be our partner for now. But again, we have to get our house in order and, and be able to do our own thing. So for right now, I think our mutual aid agreement does work and it's reciprocal. So if, you know, if something happens with them, we will provide services for them for whatever the need may be. It could be a rescue, confined space, could be any of the different rescue disciplines we have. So it's one hand washes another kind of thing. So in the end, I don't think they're so reluctant to help us. If it was happening every week or something like that, then that would be different. But there's still a need for it because there are, you know, at least over a handful of water rescues that city responds to. So we definitely have to address replacing that boat. And it's not astronaut. We're talking again, it's not my money, other than being a taxpayer, but under $4,000 to replace with new boat. So it's not like we're looking at 20 or 30,000, you know, a large expenditure, but it's something that we have to find the money for in a bunch of, and be able to get one ordered and delivered. It's going to be a whole lot of things.
Now, just a police question. I was on the bike trail and a lady stopped me and asked me what the speed limit is on the bike trail for electric bikes. Is there a speed limit on the track?
Not that I'm aware of.
I was pre- anticipating like the bikes when that was built. Yeah.
Yeah. Because now these bikes will go 30, 35 miles an hour.
Speaking of electric.
Yeah. Yeah, you could pedal it fast.
Yeah.
Speaking of the electric bikes, we did get two loaners as I reported the last meeting. We had it for a couple of weeks and they were they were amazing. They were actually excellent tools for our officers. One officer actually made a motor vehicle stop with one of them. So they're pretty, they're pretty, they're pretty amazing. They have since been taken back by the company, but it's something we're going to consider and look into. But as far as speed limits go, I haven't even, we haven't even thought about that.
Is there a speed limit on Connecticut bike trails?
I don't know, Commissioner.
What we can do is we can have our Parks and Rec Director take a look at that. We need to do a little research on that.
I don't know. But um, that's all I have.
Do they need a horn or a bell?
Yeah. And just, are we going to look into purchasing bikes or getting to donated?
Well, if we can get them donated, that'd be the best thing to do, but those, those are hard to count. Donations are hard to come by. But we're going to be looking to potentially purchase too.
Because the Trek took over. This is a Trek wholesale store now.
Trek, actually those two electric bikes were Trax.
Oh, yeah. Or these are specialized, I'm sorry, specializes in Torrey.
Yeah.
Trek is in. Yeah. And you got a ton of bikes there. So, all right, thank you.
Commissioner McElroy.
Nice. Like, welcome to President for coming by here. Appreciate that. I thought that the mayor and the chiefs did a great job at the nine 11 memorial, especially Chief Baldwin, very good speech. I really enjoyed that. The showing was down, but life is life and people do whatever they want. So if you want to be there, you'll be there. They always give me a candlelight, candlelight.
You know, I'm standing there in uniform, like, no, my back and everything, and you're playing. But that's all right.
We'll give you a flashlight. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Spino.
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
I just would also like to acknowledge, while we say attendance was less than we've seen in the past, I will tell you attendance was still pretty robust. You know, they were, the thing of it is some people choose to stand in that parking lot on the North End Fire Station grounds. They don't choose to sit in the seats that get put up. But there's also a fair number of people that are standing across the street. You know, they were on the lawn and on the sidewalk across the street. So while I would agree, maybe it wasn't quite as robust as it's been in the past, I think the 20th anniversary was a very big showing. But it was a rainy Sunday morning as well. Sometimes I think the time of day or the weather is an influence on all that. But it is truly a remarkable ceremony. In addition to our public safety departments representing the city for the nine 11 services for Wilbert Bowles, or as we all know him, Weebo's funeral services. The police department and fire department were represented there. Commissioner Battle, I think, just brought the house down with her tribute and incredible voice. It reminds me of how important our faith-based community is to us here in the city of Torrington. How important it is that we help lift the family members, other people who've really done so much, you know, maybe he didn't sit on a board. Maybe he didn't, you know, win an election, but Weebo did so much for this community quietly and only for the right reasons. And for, for that reason, I'm incredibly grateful that our department showed up strong. So with that said, the yeah, with that said, I think there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So Commissioner Benedetto and second by Commissioner McElroy, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.